Good evening and welcome to the October 17th meeting of the Brea Board of Education. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Here.
Mrs. Ferris?
Here.
Mr. Mack?
Here.
Mr. Postal?
Here.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have public participation, and first we have Bruna Galati. Bruna, I think this is the first time you've spoken, so I just want to let you know that there's a three-minute timer behind you, and when the time is up, you'll hear a beep.
Actually, I've spoken before, but it's been maybe a year, a little over a year, so I haven't been around very much.
Okay, could you tell us what city you live in?
Middleburg Heights.
Okay, thank you.
I've been a resident of Middleburg Heights now for four years, transplanted from Pennsylvania, and I can say it's a step up. Okay, several weeks ago, an SEL presentation was reviewed during the school board meeting that SEL instruction would begin in January of 2023. The first step of the SEL process uses the results of a student survey as a baseline promoting data collection, and so it begins. In the first week of October, a DAP survey, which stands for Developmental Assets Profile, was given to fifth and ninth grade students. Parents were notified by email the Wednesday before the week of the survey distribution, hardly enough time for a working parent to be able to review the survey prior to their child taking it. There are a number of problems with how this was handled, in my opinion. This survey was in violation of 20 U.S. Code Section 1232H, Protection of Pupil Rights, and I have a copy that I can give to you. Subsection B specifically states that surveys are limited to revealing information about critical appraisals of other individuals with home respondents, close family relationships, about religious practices, affiliations, or beliefs of the student, et cetera. And you can read from the list that I will provide you. The school cannot use the excuse of copyright laws as a means of denying parents a copy of the survey since parents are not using this information for resale. They duly have the right to have a copy under the U.S. Code and a high revised code 3313.60G before the survey is administered. As a result of my FOIA letter dated October 6th requesting information about the DAP survey, I received a file with emails between Ms. Lori Sanson, I hope I pronounced her name correctly, Director of Pupil Services, as well as the completed form and the cost of the services provided by Search Institute, which is the company where the, who provided the, the survey form. There was no protection to safeguard that child's privacy, excuse me, in the form of a contract to prevent Search Institute from giving or selling this personal data to a third party or the government, so we have no idea what they do with that data. This is clearly against HIPAA laws. Also, I discovered that there were two versions of the survey, one with and one without expanded gender language. I and other parents apparently reviewed the survey without the gender expansion. I need to know if I will be getting a copy of both of them, and as it appears that this survey actually was given to the children, I'm saying the one with the gender expansion may have been given to the children. So my question is, why did Mrs. Sanson specifically request to be emailed the survey without the gender expansion? Because, per her request, and I quote, "I have a few parents requesting to see it before allowing their student to participate on Monday." So I need to ask if I will, and when will I get both versions of the survey? Thank you.
Next, we have James Grash.
I don't see Ed Gallack here. Ed Gallack from Fox Eight was hopefully going to be here tonight, but apparently he couldn't make it. We have big problems in this district. This investigation on the hazing by Fox Eight and Ed Gallack, hopefully they'll get to the bottom of it, but that's only the tip of the iceberg. You know, it appears that this was all covered up by Tracy and this board. Did they cover up sexual assaults to protect an NFL prospect at the time? And students involved, is there any relations to anybody that's on this board? Those are, those are things we need to know. Well, let's hope not. But it sure smells like a cover-up. It sure smells bad. Another subject, we have history teachers that come here and won't stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. That just spits in the face of the veterans of our community, and there's a big veterans community, and particularly Middleburg, and Brea, and, and all our cities here, Brook Park, Middleburg, and Brea, there's a heavy veterans, and that just spits in their face coming here and not standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, and that's an eighth-grade history teacher that does this. We have Marxist views being taught in our American history class right in this high school, Marxist curriculum being used, Marxist books, Marxist views on Ameri-, or American history. That's just sad. We have systemic wokeness here in this, in this school system, on this board, systemic wokeness is what we have here on this board. Transgender queer theory being forced on our kids' throats by the policy proposed by this extremist board. We're not trying to cancel the LGBT community as they would have you believe. That's a false narrative and a lie. We simply don't want our kids sexualized in grade schools and do not want pornography in our classrooms. That's what groomers do. Every speech for the LGBT theory mentions the high suicide rate. Well, that makes a lot of sense. They are, they have mental issues and need professional counseling for this cult, this trend they've been sucked into. I'd ask again, I've mentioned it before, I'd ask for Tracy to resign. This district is not being served well. The grades are going down. I listened to your last, last speech, tried to spin it, and it's just spin, and it's, our kids deserve so much better in this district than what you're providing in this board. Thank you.
Next, we have Ed Dean. Mr. Dean, could you tell us what city you live in, please?
I'm sorry?
What city you live in, please?
Homestead Falls.
Thank you.
Okay, on July 11th, at this school board meeting, I gave the school board copies of three state statutes, which the Brea School Board District is in violation. You gave the right of mass determination to the superintendent, who never pledged allegiance to the state constitution or the federal constitution, subjecting them to violations of civil rights. I don't know if you have a law department, which probably you do, did you run it by the law department? There are violations of established state statutes, which you violated and ignored. You do not have, and did not have, an authorized medical person. Two school board meetings ago, it was said by the superintendent that we don't make people wear masks, we just recommend. There's a legal notice then to all school districts in the state of Ohio saying you can't even recommend. So I recommend, my recommendation is that you have your law department review the statutes, which I physically gave the school board, review those because you're in violation of estate, established state law and subject to a fifth-degree felony. This is not going away. I will not let it go away. It will be pursued. So if you want to do something on behalf of the kids, instead of violating the civil rights, instead of violating established state statutes, you may want to address this. I sent you a letter as of September 22nd in response to your response to me negating the points I was making, and I still haven't heard a response. And you can't say you didn't get it because I sent it certified. So I would appreciate a response to my letter of September 22nd, 2022. Thank you.
Next is Donna Calvi. Hi, Ms. Calvi, can you tell us what city you live in?
It'd be a nice one day that I won't have to keep coming back to school anymore.
What city do you live in?
Uh, Brook Park.
Thank you.
Um, but for now, I do want to address the whole community, the stakeholders, as far as the families and children, the board, all the police department, law departments, you know, everybody who kind of violences, silences people from talking about things. There is a legal precedent, and that legal precedent is the devices in classroom, uh, teachers sued the board for installing audio and visual, visual recording devices in classrooms were in error because a classroom in a public school building is not intended for a teacher's exclusive and personal use. Therefore, the teacher could not have a reasonable expectation of privacy, and I can't believe that your teachers even have to stay quiet, because obviously it's a public school, so your teacher shouldn't have to be quiet either. That's the first thing. The second thing is, we've already talked about, I've already come back for, since a year before the Case Western Reserve incident, begging for the staff to address ACEs and address the culture that's in the school that's predisposing our students to more than 4,600% more likely to become IV drug users in their lifetime and overdose fatality. Okay? These kids who are dying of overdoses, if they're present students or former students, I allege that it is you. It is your culture. It is the ignorance of treating state core injuries for some other DSM diagnosis. This SEL that you're trying to shove down everybody's throat, as far as I'm concerned, is to deflect from the ACEs that the school district has already evidentially failed to respond to appropriately. I had a meeting, meeting with Ms. Wheeler in December of 2019 before Kaylee Roberts died, and she said she's not going to deal with the ACEs because the parent, uh, the, the teachers don't want to deal with the ACEs, so this is a big problem. You guys should not even be receiving kids in school. You should have parents' ACEs informed consent, and if you're not going to do anything about it, I am going to do something about it. I am going to stop you, and I'm going to stop you in your tracks. And thanks for the education so that I can do that.
Our last speaker is Dave Cecarelli.
The three words that we describe our district, what maybe would be some better three words, would be accountable, transparent, and trustworthy. In the summer of 2019, at Case Western Reserve, I think we all know about the sexual assault of the student at the football camp. As far as I know, there was only one student that was charged, and others were not due to the fact that they were minors. Not one staff member was held accountable. Everyone still kept their jobs, and everyone went on their lives like as if nothing happened. Now there has been a lawsuit filed, and I'll read some of its content. This is more for the people watching on YouTube, because I'm sure most of everybody's heard this already. "As a result of negligent and reckless acts of omission of all defendants," there's 15 of them, by the way, "the plaintiff was subject to bullying, hazing, harassment, and sexual assault. The reported disturbances alone show that the Brea defendants, including the coaching staff, were either not on site while the above described events transpired, or that they were so negligent and/or reckless that they allowed these events to occur as part of the culture of hazing and abuse. The board and the district failed to discipline a single member of the coaching staff for their obvious failures. All in furtherness of maintaining a football program that was at all times valued above safety and security of the children's exploits." I can't read all of Mrs. Wheeler's response to the statement, but here's a clip. "Due to the pending litigation, the district is unable to provide further details and will not be commenting publicly about the situation." Sounds to me like the board, the defendants, and the whole district wants to sweep this under the rug like they did three years ago. Thank you.
Okay, before we go on, I'd like to address some of the concerns that were brought forward this evening. First of all, what happened at the football camp was horrible, but no one who spoke this evening, no one in this room was a football coach or present. Therefore, what you're choosing to say is third and fourth-hand at best. Students, even after they've graduated, are entitled to privacy. This board does not have any more information than what has been publicized in the media and in the lawsuit. We do not have, uh, excuse me, Ms. Calvi.
Shut your mouth!
You're out of order, Ms. Calvi.
I just wanted you to respond to public comment.
I'm not responding to public comment, I'm making a statement. Thank you, Mr. Grash, you had your three minutes, now it's my turn. This board does not have any more rights to any information about students than any regular citizen does. Whether you choose to believe that or not, that is the truth. We do not know what happened. Their rights are protected under FERPA, and the district will not be commenting or discussing this matter other than to cooperate with the lawsuit. The history teacher that was brought up, this was brought up about a year and a half or two years ago, and she has every right to not to stand for the pledge. We are not teaching gender theory, anything Marxist in our American history class, or pornography, or grooming children in this district, and if you consider, if you think that that is happening, then I would like some evidence, because it's been going on for years that we bring these accusations, and there's still nothing. Just because something you don't like does not necessarily mean that it falls under any of these categories, so please provide us some evidence so we can investigate. Mr. Dean, you will not receive a response to your 927 letter because we already responded to your first FOIA request, and we said that we do not need a medical license. Mr. Dean, we do not need a medical license to issue a mask mandate per the state, when that happened back in 2020 and 2021, and we do have a law department that has advised us so. We can put you in touch with them if you would like that.
No, that's your job. That's your job to reform the law.
And we have done that. Okay, next is the superintendent's update.
Do you want to say something about that?
All right, just a couple things to update the board on from my update on Friday. One, just, I had indicated that we start the next steps this Friday with our participation in SOAR, which is connected to Batel for Kids. That's the work that we're going to do to really lay the groundwork for our Portrait of a Titan and also our strategic plan. So the board's aware of this, and I think, I think I had said something to Mrs. Zurkey, but we are, you're going to, hopefully our, the, the final, final parts and pieces of the strategic plan should be coming out here in the next week or two, but we have named it, it's going to be called Destination 2027. The work that we've done with the new strategic plan and the work that we've done with the Portrait of a Titan, it's going to take some time, and so our participation with SOAR through Batel for Kids is really going to help us create that roadmap of what we need to do to bring all of this pretty much to life. So I will, in my next update, kind of give you some information about how this first session went and really what we expect to get from it. I provided you with the 22, the recommendations from the instructional audit from 2019, 2020. Does anyone have any questions about that? I think you could see by that, number one, the, the recommendations of what we needed to do to improve student achievement. It takes time, we are getting better, and the work that we're still doing this year is still pretty intense to meet those needs, but most of the work that we're doing this year is all directly tied into our strategic plan. Mike had provided, Mike put that in there, the pictures of the baseball field, we're still working on updating the baseball field, so there was some work done on that just recently, and I think that's all I have. We'll talk about a couple other things at the next work, so.
A consent agenda, it's recommended that item C3 to C14 be approved as part of the consent agenda unless a Board of Education member wishes to have an item removed.
So moved.
Second.
So I think, and again, everything's pretty routine on there. We do have, I think there's two pieces in here that kind of connect together. One of the things that we did do in the last negotiations is we put in a, an incentive for an early retirement announcement, which I think you've, you've seen that we've gotten already quite a few retirement announcements so far this year, which does help us with staffing and posting jobs and starting to look for people early. So we have five retirements on this agenda. We have Laura Cummins, who's at the, at the middle school, she's been with us since 1990. We have Melissa Jarboe, who's also fifth grade at the middle school, she's been with us since 1991. John McDonald, who is fourth grade at BPE, he has been with us since 1998. Elaine Paduzzi at the middle school, great, grade eight, she's been with us from, since 1996, and then Mark Peddleton, who's at the high school, he also, he's been with us since 1995. So I know it's early, and, you know, maybe we can do some kind of a different recognition closer to the end of the year. I know they do it in the buildings, but I just wanted to acknowledge them and again, thank them for their time and their commitment to the Brea City School District.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Number 15, it's recommended the individuals listed below be approved to sell tickets and work athletic events for the 2022-20 through school year at the rate of $10 per hour for regular season games and $35 per hour per OHSAA tournaments.
So moved.
Just adding to the list.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Number 16, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the memo of understanding between Franklin University and the Brea City School District for pre-student teaching field experience and student teaching clinical experiences provided to the teaching profession's candidates as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Number 17, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the proposal from capital,
aluminum, and glass for material and labor to install one double entrance door at Brea Mid Park Middle School, as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
This really is an attempt to us to make that entrance more ADA compliant. It's really the, the, the only entrance at the middle school that actually has a handicap accessible door is the one that goes in at the, at the gym, that one. That's not our main entrance, so we have reconfigured that so that that now new main entrance will be ADA compliant, and then that is also being paid out of our safety and security money, not the grant money that we just got, but other safety and security money.
So this is the entrance on the side?
Correct, which we deem to be the main entrance. Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Number 18, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the memo of understanding between the Brea City School District and the City of Middleburg Heights for construction, improvement, and renovation of the tennis courts located at Brea Mid Park Middle School, as shown in the exhibit.
So moved. Second.
This is just a partnership with the City of Middleburg Heights. For, we, we use the tennis courts the majority of the time, but it's also available for the city to use, and then we're also, which the city had expressed interest in, adding pickleball court lines, of which we won't use at a high school, for school purposes, so they will be...
But you don't know that.
That's true. You never know. It could become, it could, it could become the thing, right? Who's getting feedback?
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Number 19, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the Southwest General Health Center signage agreement, as shown in the exhibit below.
So moved.
Second.
So I'm pretty excited to announce that we have entered, we have renegotiated, entered into a sponsorship agreement with Southwest General, $200,000 over the next 10 years, and that will start with the board passing that this tonight. It will start with our first payment on October 31st of this year, and then each year to commence for the next 10 years. So it starts out with $30,000 this year, $30,000 next year, and then 17.5 for the remaining eight years, and that contract will end in 2031. Signage is what we've agreed to, which there's already some signage at RAME. We're waiting to see what the, we have a turf project that we'll be bringing to the board here soon, so new signage on, will be on the front, again, due to the sponsorship and the amount of money that we've given, they've given us, the front sign in front of RAME that's on Bagley Road, we're going to change the signage there. If you look at the, if you look at the RAME, the old RAME building, there's signage up there. We're going to put signage on the east side of that building, and then there needs to be signage when you walk actually into Groza Field, the, I'll say the press box, there's going to be some up there. So we've already shown them the renderings of what that would look like, we've gotten their approval, and I just want to thank Southwest General for such a generous donation to the district.
The signage that you're talking about adding is outside of the donation, Southwest. Southwest, according to, it sounded like the agreement was that they pay for, for the signage.
We pay for the signage as part of the sponsorship, so part of the, the sponsorship money, part of that is that we, we work with them just to approve the artwork for the signage, but part of that money is to put the signage up. It's not going to cost us a whole, a whole lot. I will tell you this, we actually, right now, because before I came to the district, and we haven't had sponsorship with them for the last two years, right, I think, Mike? I think 1920 was the last year we actually had a sponsorship agreement with them, and at that time, it was $10,000 a year, I'm not sure, but it, it expired. We still do have money in that account from them that we're going to use to actually pay for the signage.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Number 20, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the following agreement with the Educational Service Center of Medina County for School Health Services at Camp Mibroby during the 2022-23 school year, as shown in the exhibit. My Broby during the 2022-23 school year as shown in the exhibit.
This is just a routine contract item for when we send the kids to Camp My Broby, which they're going tomorrow.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Number 21, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the following district-sponsored field trip, Berea Mid Park High School softball team to Pigeon Forge, Tennessee from April 10th, 2023 through April 15th for a spring break softball trip.
No move.
This the first time that...
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Number 22, it's recommended the Board of Education adopt girls wrestling to be recognized as a varsity sport.
So moved.
Second.
So this actually, I think, is pretty exciting. So we believe, right now, we have enough interest in girls wrestling that we will have a girls wrestling team. But the first thing we had to do is have it board approved so that it, it is an OHSAA-approved sport. So with the approval tonight of adopting that as a, an official varsity sport, we will be posting a position to hire a girls wrestling coach.
Facilities-wise, practice-wise, what's...
We actually, the way RAME is set up, we are able to put two separate mats in there. Yeah. So we actually have, a lot of places don't have the facilities where they're able to do that. We do have the facilities at RAME to be able to do a boys program and a girls program.
It's considered a winter sport?
Yes.
During...
Yeah, you made me think about it. Yeah, they'll, they'll wrestle the same time...
Same as wrestling basketball.
They will wrestle the same time as the boys, yeah.
That'll start this year or next?
Our plan is to do it this year. Yeah, we think we've got the interest level this year to begin.
Okay.
Just high school or middle school?
The, high school.
How many programs are there other than our, you know, other girls teams? Like, will there be within the conference, with the state, any...
So it is obvi, I don't know that I can answer all of that. It is a growing sport. There are places that have full teams, but there are places that don't have enough for full teams, but they do have individual girls who will go to compete. So I don't have the, I can get, I can try to, I can have John Justice kind of get those numbers for you, but I don't have those numbers, Rick.
We have a meeting tomorrow at 8:00 AM about it.
Yes, yeah, we're meeting tomorrow morning after this, if the board approves this. So I can get that information for you.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Number 23, the policies as shown in the exhibits are being presented tonight for a first reading.
Good evening. So the first policy is Policy 2280, and it's being the reflections to keep current with Ohio Administrative Code. Basically, the State Board adopted several important changes to definitions to preschool classrooms under the state's governing regulations. It was hard to implement preschool programs with the parameters that they had put on it, and so this was feedback from the Ohio Department of Education to make it simpler with regard to numbers of special ed students who had to be in certain preschool classrooms. So, you know, that's in essence what the change is, to make it simpler, to be able to make sure preschool classes ran. Policy 2413 is career advising. We are excited, actually, in the district, this is a side note on policy, but we're working on a K-12 plan right now. So a lot of Terry and Karen at the elementary level, Lori Hurst at the middle school, and Greg Seuss at the high school are working at aligning our career plan K-12. We'll have a document for the board that will detail all of our K-12 career planning in the spring for you guys, and we're excited about that. This is, the policy has been revised to reflect Senate Bill 135 that went into effect in July, several requirements for K-12 career advising, specifically for at-risk students, making sure they put in place a success plan. So early identifiers locally developed, who's not on, who doesn't have a plan, and how can we work with them to do that. Had interesting meetings recently with Polaris Career Center, who is doing some really neat things to try and help our juniors and seniors develop career plans and connect with our adult ed program that Mike Sklachka's taken over at Polaris, and make sure that they have some connection to do something after high school. Excited about the direction that that's heading. 2430 and 2431, district-sponsored clubs and interscholastic athletics. This is to include, it's Senate Bill 181, the bill prohibits districts, as well as non-public schools and interscholastic conference governing bodies, from adopting any type of rule that would limit a student from wearing religious apparel while participating in extracurricular activity unless the apparel poses a danger to the student or others. Even if there was some safety risk involved, a school district must offer a reasonable accommodation. This is so that we get in line with Ohio law. Employment of personnel for co-curricular extracurricular activities, this applies for a classified staff, which emphasizes and makes a policy that they must have a valid PAP in order to participate as an extracurricular or coach advisor. Our, our certified staff already has that, so we wanted to make sure that the classified staff has that. It, it reflects current Ohio law.
Mr. Draves, PAP, could you please explain what it is?
Pupil activity permit, so more detailed training in how to work with things like first aid, and probably Rick can tell you more, he's more current than I am with that. Care of students with chronic health conditions and care of students with diabetes. The Ohio Legislature passed House Bill 231, which talked about the procurement of glucagon and identified policies that needed to be revised to reflect current law. Policy 54601, diploma deferral refers to, it's been modified to recognize students with disabilities who are approved for social graduation and that remain at the school, can continue to work on their graduated transition-related IEP goals, do not need to master or complete those IEP goals before accepting their diploma. And so just revising that policy. 6700 is Fair Labor Standards Act, which guarantees mothers that are breastfeeding reasonable breaks to be able to do that, also following federal law. 7440, facility security, this is a policy, quite frankly, it was just to really codify and put into place things that we already do. Basically, it holds me accountable as the business manager and assistant superintendent to make sure that we have policies in place to make sure that our facilities are secure. Small unmanned aircraft systems, there, there basically was just a little change at the, at the bottom with updated federal regulation citation, so it wasn't a ton of change there. And transportation, the revisions provide clarification for, in direction for districts. There was a lot of changes, we had just done this in March 2021, I think, August 21, and ODE came out with guidance on how to implement that, so we wanted to make sure that our policy reflected the most updated guidance, and so the highlights there would be suggestions from ODE and through Niola. I think that's it. Any questions?
Did you do personnel files and student records?
Oh, did I skip over it?
8320 and 8330?
Well, that is actually a simple, it's a simple change, but it basically, and I want to get the language right, has been updated in order to clarify that an, no, that's the So if you had the, the language they have here, if you are, if you're as an employee or a student, able to provide authorization card from the Secretary of State as proof of enrollment in the program, it basically refers to people who are in witness relocation, that if you're able to provide that document, that we have to take policies and procedures to help protect your identity. And so that, that's what those both are within employee and student records. The language they used in there was odd, I hadn't seen that before.
Questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Go Guardians.
Treasurers update.
On the agenda tonight is linked in the monthly September financial report. Looking at it, revenue is showing as being up for the month of September. The only reason the revenue is up, it's a timing issue. Usually our homestead and rollback payments from the state are made in October, and this year they were made in September. So our revenue is up a little bit based on, on those payments, is a timing issue. Our expenditures are trending down, which I kind of knew that going in with the retirees we had and the new hires. So expenditures are trending down, we will talk further about this when I present the November forecast at the first meeting in November, November 7. Other than that, everything's running very smoothly.
Thank you. It's recommended that items D3 to D7 be approved as part of the consent agenda unless a Board of Education member wishes to have an item removed.
So moved. Second.
On the agenda tonight, we have a supplemental appropriation measure. This is for the, to increase the general fund appropriations, general fund budget for the Rocks program at the middle school. That just came out of a different account before, and we, I need to get it into the middle school budget, so we're just increasing the appropriations, so it's in the middle school budget moving forward. A number of gifts and donations are on the agenda tonight. You'll see the $5,000 from the Middleburg Heights Chamber of Commerce for stuff of us, thank you. $2,000 for Camp My Broby, for kids to go to Camp My Broby. We had an anonymous donation by somebody who bought a dance ticket for, for somebody. Other than that, on the, and then there's another item on the agenda tonight to, as our auditors are looking and doing things, we need to adjust the financials to get the cash balance in line from the bank to the books, just to, to make sure everything's in accordance. Board to approve that tonight.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the minutes of the September 19th, 2022 meeting and the October 3rd, 2022 work session as shown in the exhibits.
Can, can we separate those two, please?
Oh, sure, okay. Okay, so first, let's do September 19th.
Move to accept the minutes of September 19th.
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Abstain.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Okay, and now approve the minutes of the October 3rd work session.
No move. Second.
Any additions or corrections? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Okay, legislative update, just wanted to let you know, the Ohio Board of Education delayed their vote on that resolution that we talked about at our last meeting. It was sent to their executive committee by a vote of 12 to 7, so it may or may not be on their November... Okay, Board of Education comments? Shout-outs? Go ahead, Heather.
Okay. I want to thank the staff at Polaris for hosting all of us this past week. It was my first time participating in, in the dinner that they have for school board members and superintendents and treasurers and others, all of the schools that feed into Polaris. It was my first time in the building, it was amazing. The food was terrific, the, our food was prepared by students, we were served by students, they were so impressive. And Southwest General was honored that night for their partnership with Polaris. And so it's, it's amazing that they're making this financial commitment to our district, but then also to see how they're allowing students to come into their facilities and work alongside of their staff. It's really a tremendous partnership, so I was so glad to be part of the evening and to be with all of you last week.
Two, the rally in the alley was put on by the ETA Council, and I just thought it was a nice community event. They had a chili cook-off, and they had some yard games out front of the school before the game on Friday. Then the Music Boosters had their annual craft show this past weekend, which raises a significant amount of money for the music programs at the high school. Play and... Nice to have people who are willing to help.
To piggyback on the, my, my last shout-out, which was to Middleburg Heights and their Fall Festival. Since our last meeting, Brook Park and Berea both had their Fall Festival, Harvest Festival, and the board was present and was handing out treats, and hundreds, hundreds of children came through. It was a great time. I was commenting to some of my colleagues here about when we were young, how trick-or-treated on Halloween, and that was it, and just how many opportunities the kids nowadays have to, to socialize and to wear the costumes, are certainly getting their use out of their costumes that they're buying these days. But it was wonderful, and it was good to see everybody, and have a safe Halloween.
Okay, I've got two things, Berea Mid Park High School, shout-out for hosting the grandparents and other kinship caregiver support group for grandparents and other families, members who are basically raising children in the district. That's this upcoming Wednesday, October 26th, from 6:00 to 7:30 in the Atlas. I just think it's a really important organization. I know BPE has, I think, a similar, has run a similar program, and I just think it's really very needed and very good support. Also, Mrs. Hunts over at Snow School has been working with kids on classifying, measuring, and dissecting items in class, and now they're using, they're applying those measurement skills because due to an increased enrollment at Snow School, adding another classroom. And so they're basically being, applying all those measurement skills to design the layout of the new Snow School classroom. That's kind of a cool application.
And I'd like to shout out to middle school band directors Pam Meyer and Gabby Westgate and high school band directors Jeff Fidali and Brett Benzen for having the seventh and eighth graders perform on Friday night with the marching band. There were 130 of them. They played three songs, included the Star Spangled Banner. They were, they were on the field with them at pre-game, they marched to and from the high school to the stadium, they sat in the stands with them. And thank you to the band boosters for buying shirts for the kids and including them in the third quarter snacks as well. The varsity show for the band is this week, Wednesday and Thursday, and then the orchestra has their annual show Rocktober on October 27th. And then also, you mentioned it very briefly, but I wanted to send well wishes to our sixth graders who are leaving for camp tomorrow and next week and the week after, and their staff and the high school officers that are going along with them. Bundle up, because it's going to be... Okay, any committee reports?
From Polaris, piggybacking on Mike, Polaris is working with the various districts and trying to create a program to help students who don't actually go to Polaris but still are not planning on going to college, trying to create opportunities for job skill enhancement and job placement for those students who want to go to... Have a successful...
Okay, our next board meeting is, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Heather.
Just really quick, the Education Foundation also met last week, and Mrs. Wheeler was there to talk about, in part, having teacher grants, having one of the requirements be that teachers show how their requests for grant money fit into our Portrait of a Titan program, which I thought was a terrific idea. And so Mrs. Wheeler made a great presentation about Portrait of a Titan and, and what that is going to look like. So it was cool that the foundation got introduced to that, so thank you for being there.
Okay, our next board meeting is not till November 7th, but on October 26th...
Okay, our next board meeting is not till November 7th, but on October 26th, which is a Wednesday, at 6:30 at the Berea Library, is the first edition of our listening leaders, where two board members will be present, along with the superintendent and other members of the administrative team, for anyone that would like to come by and chat or ask questions. I think that's it. We have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Go Guardians.